Director Sodder?
Here.
Director Rice?
Here.
Director Carty Simon? Director Laffey?
Here.
Director Casey? Board Chair Raha?
Here. Okay, we have a call. Item number two, a public comment, anybody who would address the board? No one? Item three, to the recognition of any guests or visitors who would address the board. Thing done? Item number four is to approve the agenda. And members have a bunch of changes to the agenda, I'm not going to go through all of them. But I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So made.
Motion by Shelley.
Support.
Support by Danielle. Any comments or questions on the agenda? All those in favor? Aye opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to item five, reports. First is the Superintendent Adrian.
Thank you. Friday, January 27th, Injensa is kicking off their meetings with staff regarding the new building project. They'll be meeting with each building staff on the upcoming Wednesdays in February. The admin team this Friday. And then during our professional development day, they're going to meet with staff at the high school to discuss next steps. So that's happening shortly. Currently are inventing a new bus communication system. We've had a number of failures with our current system. I know Mike has reached out to get some quotes. The issue we have is we want to actually physically try them because we have remote areas that certain products won't work. And so when we are asking for a demo, we're asking for a true hard demo so that we can make sure that we have good communications even on our farthest routes. So as we vet these, I'll update you when we can have a chance to make sure that these things all work for what we need them to do. I may be stepping on Mike's toes on some of these, but we've been having pool dehumidification issues. We decided to go through a process of elimination to redo the whole thing with a lot of money. I talked to the actual person that was going to come up and do some of the work. We decided to do a step-by-step so we know either exactly what's wrong or is the entire system needing a redo? And so some positives were they got the switches to work and they got a circulating pump to work. The next step is they're testing the coils. And the filtration piece is the one that they're most worried about that needs to be redone. So we're hopeful, but we're not out of the water per se yet. So pardon the pun. But we'll update you as we figure out where this ends up. But right out the gate, it was a pretty hefty price tag. So we're going to see where we can get to with some of these smaller steps first so we can understand better what exactly we need. Tuesday afternoon, January 31st, I'll be presenting to the Lake Country Power Board in Cohasset regarding a grant I wrote that would fund two-thirds of the cost of a smart TV studio. And I'm told I'll be awarded it then. So it sounded like if you're in the finals, you will be getting the award. They just wanted to put a name and a face with it and talk through some of the specifics. So that's happening on the 31st. That's all I have for you.
Smart TV lab?
Yep, so it's the same.
It's like the sports bar.
It's similar to the Smart Lab upstairs. It's an offshoot of it, it's for the high school level. And it pairs with your journalism class. And they can do morning announcements, they can do bullying videos, actual TV productions, so they can do alone weather, sports updates.
It's not Channel 1?
It's kind of revisiting Channel 1, but it's kids-driven. And you can tie up English credit to it.
And where, how is that?
So ideally, we're looking at a space in the library currently because it's set up where you could have the studio on one part and then the mechanics of it on another, so people running the boards and things aren't in the actual studio due to the noise and things, the separation. They're going to come up and take a look as we move further along. But that kind of is an ideal location for us, especially if we move the Smart Lab to over by where Travis' room is. So trying to put all these tech pieces in a row as well.
Any other questions for Adrian?
Thank you.
Okay, next is the Principal's report. Mark.
Hello.
Hi, Mark.
Just a few things, we got Chaz Wagner, Indian Ed Director. He set this up, so I'm not going to take credit for it, but we have Miss Minnesota's going to we have a student assembly and Rachel Evangelisto. She's a member of the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe. And she's going to come to the assembly with our kids on February 24th. So that's pretty cool. She's going to get set up in the evening, so she's going to swing over here and do a 15-minute assembly with her students.
Do you have the time?
So I, it's, I want to say third hour, so 10:10 we're going to leave to the assembly. Yeah, so we've had more assemblies this year, we tried to do one every, we had one act planned on Friday. I don't know if Mr. Vaki is going to talk about that or not, but they had a performance. So we're trying to get back into doing these assemblies just for a community feel. Kids love it and it's just good community building with the kids and whatnot, which we didn't have for a couple of years there with COVID. We're going to start registering for classes here in a week or two. We're just finalizing some things, Joel Phillips is on Power School to get ready for that. Some things we're adding this year, Mr. Johnson in the shop, he'll be teaching all five of his high school, ninth through 12 classes will be CTE, so tech ed. So what comes with that is some of that will be funded. Some of his salary will be funded, but also he'll be able to get a lot of, they get a lot of, Mr. Prontz, he would just got a new laser printer that doesn't come out of our general fund. So they can get a lot of tools and other things through Perkins because of CTE. And with that, we're going to add an overload to him, he's going to do an eighth grade tech class in the metal shop too. So we're going to add that to the rotation for kids. So Mrs. Carroll is going to, also got certified for tech ed classes for photography for next year. So sort of the same thing, but it's just one class. So but that's good too. And then of course, Mrs. Fleming, this year we've been doing the work-based learning. Twelve or 13 kids in there right now, and I just added two more for spring semester, which started today. And so that's going pretty well too. So it's a pretty good deal for some of those kids, they get credit for going to work, plus they get paid. So and whatnot. We are adding, we didn't have CNA this year, we didn't have enough kids. They weren't going to run it with two kids. We had seven or eight registered, but you got to have a certain GPA. So you got to be basically PSEO eligible. So right now, what we're talking about with Hibbing is maybe holding it at Hibbing High School, partly at Hibbing Community College, and then we would at least still offer it for the kids. And then, but that's, we just haven't had the numbers that we had in the past that we're interested in.
And that's for next year?
Yeah, yep. And we've offered it every year, this year was the first year we didn't get to run it just because of the lack of interest in it. So, well, we had interest, but the lack of even the qualifications for GPA. And the last thing, I don't know, maybe Mr. Vaki has talked about this, the art mural?
No.
Okay, I'll just make sure, okay, we got two kids are going to do an art mural in the lobby of the gym for some of our, we have quite a few famous athletes here, like it's not just Chisholm things, but you know, gold medal winners, bronze medal, and Olympic, Olympics and whatnot. So we have a couple of girls are going to do a mural in the lobby. And they're hoping to be done by end of the school year, or by the art show they want to be done by. So it's kind of a cool, cool project. So they always come to me and give me a pre-drying, let me know what it looks like. And try to have the kids do one a year or so, so it's kind of cool. Decorator school. Yeah, that's about it.
Any questions for Mark?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Yep. So along with the mural piece, it is board policy about retaining the murals. We had some damage in some of the areas that we wanted to repair. So we're looking at possible alternate things after so many years where maybe we could digitize it and turn it into a banner due to we had plaster falling off and some other things. So Mike and I are going to work on that board policy and bring it to the policy committee on possibly revising it so that we can maintain and take care of our building and still preserve the artwork. So just a heads up, that's coming because there's been some damage that we need to repair. And according to the policy, we can't touch it. So we just need to amend that so that we can have the best of both.
Yeah.
Will Dean stop refereeing?
Work with Mike. Join the conversation on screen and all that.
Good evening. Just got an update from our check-in connect person that right now we have 30 students in that program and they're recommending about 30 to 40, so we're right in that line of what we should be doing with our students. And we have 90% reduction absenteeism, which is amazing. Just sent out a few letters though as we go into the second semester because it's a little bit of a restart with kiddos and we just know that the more they're here, the more they're learning and growing, and so we're keeping on top of that. But she does a lot more than just checking in with families about absenteeism, it's grades and arriving on time and how we can support the family. So that's a great program, we so enjoyed having that program as well as North Homes. We're up and running really with North Homes for that mental health piece and seeing quite a few students with that. Just like Adrian had said about the survey, we had 90% on the e-learning day that of teachers that felt prepared for that, which is amazing. I think that's come a long way from when we started. So that was, and we're looking at and reviewing and making adjustments based on what teachers need for that. The last couple of Wednesdays for early release, we've been doing some PhD science training for our K6 teachers. That's our new program, it's called PhD Science, it's very inquiry-based, hands-on, asking students questions, it's a lot different than just the sit-and-get, doing the science workbooks. And so teachers are learning some new techniques with that. Along with that, on our day on Monday, we'll have a phonics training that I'll lead with that, which really talks about the new science of reading. So that'll be our day on Monday. We also had the Vaughn Holiday Program before Christmas, and that was really well-received. And I don't think we were able with COVID to have those programs. And so families were very happy about that. Here at the elementary, we're going to be doing a spring thing, so we'll have that in the spring for those families. We also started looking at specialist schedules for next year, hoping to be able to add art to our schedule, but we'll see how that fits in with that. Chaz, who is also doing the program at the high school, he's going to have Nijibwe winter storytelling coming up on February 9th, and we'll have that at both of the buildings, so that'll be exciting for that. Our pre-K was at the planetarium today, so that was fun. Third grade is getting out the snowshoes that were purchased, and so we're going to see how that goes for them. We do have two student teachers at the VS and just very glad that a couple of our teachers were willing to take that. So that's been a great addition to our classrooms. And we have a couple students that have lunch buddies through the United Way. So trying to do lots of multi-community things, so that's a wrap right now.
Any questions for Carla?
Thank you.
Next is Business Manager Alex, do you have anything?
Sure, just a couple of quick things that we're working on with year-end stuff. W2s, we've been going through those, proofing those, making sure all the numbers are right. We just sent out, made the electronic version available today, you probably saw the email. And mailing out the paper copies by the end of the month, so we'll make that deadline. 1099, same thing, making sure that we don't miss any vendors that exceeded $600 and that January 1st deadline. And then 1095 is related to the Affordable Care Act, those will go out in, I think February is a little bit later deadline. So just working on a lot of that year-end reporting. We got the final audit submitted and it was accepted, so we're officially done with that. And then we haven't started working on it yet, but we have health insurance bidding in the horizon here. So we'll be working on that in the coming weeks.
Anybody have any questions for Alex?
Just go to Northeast Service Squad, right?
For the health?
For the health.
Currently, yeah. But every two years you bid it out. So we'll get a bid from the Service Squad, probably from Blue Cross, and then usually get a bid from PM. Yep.
Okay. Thanks, Alex. Okay. Next is Activities Director, Mr. Vaki.
Good evening. All right, well, so we have a busy week of home games this week. Girls are playing McGregor tonight, boys are home tomorrow, boys are home Friday, and girls are home on Saturday. So if you get a spare minute, hop on over and watch our kiddos. The High School League Boys and Girls Club, oh, Boys and Girls Club, golf! Golf, co-op was approved, we're cooperating with Hibbing. So that, we just got that approval this morning, actually. So I'm very excited about that, I think we're going to have a minimum of four or five golfers this year based on students I've talked to, so really excited about that. Huddle camera is mounted, it works, it's fantastic view. I'm very excited that you allowed us to do that. We have our kickoff meeting tomorrow with Huddle. The boys game tomorrow night is going to hopefully be our trial run. But that looks great. So I'm very excited about that. Tressa, Tressa Baumgart put up her new records today. They're now on the banners in the pool, we did that this afternoon. So those pictures will go up on social media. So that's a good, good little heartwarming thing that we had going there. Uniforms and football purchases have all been made, so we're just waiting for them to get here, so that's good. And then Mr. Lewis, today, for a minute, he got a $500 donation for weight room equipment from the Elks in Evolus. So that will be coming across your desk, I would assume, your next meeting. And the last thing that I have is Hannah and I pulled enrollment numbers today, and we have 147 students enrolled in some kind of Minnesota State High School League sport or activity, which is about 22% of our total enrollment of 660. And that does not include esports, art, club, choir, or band because they don't pay a fee for their, even though their band and choir are under the High School League umbrella. Esports, hopefully you'll get there. But, so that's really good too.
And does that include figure skating?
Nope.
I was going to say, does that include that either?
Nope, because figure skating is in the.
Because they've got a pretty good letter club group.
Yeah. Which is a conversation for another day, but I think there's some things that I'd like to do differently with those clubs. Hockey, youth hockey is another one. So anyway, I won't bore you with that now. I'll save that for a rainy day. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Any questions for Travis?
Travis, Chisholm Letter Club is skating at the boys hockey game tonight, do you want to grab some photos and send them?
That would be fantastic.
Perfect.
Well, just for those who didn't know, he oversees our social media. So if you do have photos, please send them to Travis and we can get them posted.
That's why I can never catch up on my email. I always have a list, you know, growing list.
Oh, you'll learn.
Right? We'd also, since you brought that up, we also have a senior that is on the, she's on the dance, she's with a dance club in Hibbing. And they're going to do a performance at the boys' basketball game at the end of February. At halftime. So, yeah, she contacted me last week. All right? Thanks.
Okay, next to Billy the Drones, Michael.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, a couple of things here. Motor's back, it was cured by warranty, so that's a great thing. In the auditorium, finished up the wall patch in the upper part of the auditorium. Have you obviously come in and do that, we still have the lower part to do, and we have to do as well. Didn't find any other damage, it was past damage that kept making that crack in the wall bigger and bigger. So it looks a lot nicer even without being painted yet, but that's next on the agenda. As Travis mentioned, we got the Huddle camera up today. We have a custodian shortage, and so we came up with a temporary solution, just through the end of the year with a few of the workers out. So that's what you'll be working at today, but we've worked with Union and came up with a pretty good solution. Also, for our busing needs, came up with another solution there to help the driver focus on the road and the task to get those students home safely. And so by putting a pair on the bus, it's going to help meet those needs of the students as well at the same time, so.
Are you putting them on, like, all buses or just a couple?
No, just, just, just where needed, yeah. And which is one extra bus right now, we have, so it'll be actually two buses, so we'll have a pair of, right? And this is just a PM ride along on this bus, yeah. As Adrian mentioned, working, looking at some different platforms for our busing. So reach out to Safe Fleet. I do have a webinar scheduled on February 3rd at 10:00 AM, so we'll be looking at that. And again, that gives us better connection if we went this route to where we could see real-time where that bus is at through GPS. Parents would have an app too, so they could see when their kids got dropped off and so on and so forth. So we'll be looking at that, we can add dashboard cameras, we can put slant-out cameras out. Right on license places, company rooms and stop arms, those sorts of things. Along with the two cameras, you know, that we certainly have in the bus. So we would still need a two-way radio system, so like Adrian said, we're still looking into that as well. With that pool dehumidification, looking back at the drawings, that was 2009. So I don't know if you guys had any of that history either, but so it's a few years, a few years ago. As we reached that year 15, you start to see those, these issues come up, and that's what we're dealing with right now. So, so we'll get through that. We have the Safe DOT inspection for this coming Wednesday. Tomorrow we have the Minnesota Department of Health inspecting our pool. And then we're starting our first Alice rule out with the teachers on Monday. Both the high school and the elementary. So, and then we reached out to Chisholm PD and they're on board. Any questions for me?
So health inspection of the kitchens happened this week as well, or last week?
Last, oh, well, actually it was Gary was here this fall. And when he did his first round of the switch, so.
They were here on Friday, and so.
That's when they were doing the bond, so they probably, he's just going to make his rounds, so they probably got that on Friday. And now it's Wednesday, put the pool, so.
Mr. Jack?
Yes, Mr. Casey?
Is the inspection rules that just do annual inspection?
Yep, standard annual inspection. Yep, I have that at my last workplace, it's actually the same inspector as well, so. Makes it a little, a little easier, so.
Make sure.
And what he's checking is just make sure that we're compliant with what we're at, if, you know, if you have water. Water and the proper pH and chlorine levels and like if you're found to be out of compliance, we didn't shut it down. That's when you, you know, just making sure to do his checks on us as well, so.
Any questions for Mike?
So all these temporary things that we're looking at here, do we have people that are out, going to be out? I know you can't say who or what, but is there going to be people like out for a long period of time, or?
So hopefully not too much longer, but we have had some people out already and this, if we have any future as well. These are already people that are here by the district simultaneously, they're in union hours, so we don't go over that. And it's just utilizing them to maximize their hours, along with helping us out. And it helps save on the overtime and gives our guys a little reprieve as well, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
I know that I may have my voice back. Okay, item six is approval of the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the January 9th, 2023 grader meeting. Item B would be posting of job number 213, temporary custodian afternoon shift. Item C is the posting of job number 214, temporary after-school bus supervision paraprofessional. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sorry?
Motion by Cindy, there's support.
Support.
Or by Danielle. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to personnel. Item A is a motion to approve the lane change request from Timothy Nelson, a math instructor in the high school from lane F to lane G effective January 1st, 2023. Do we have a motion? Motion by Shelley?
Support.
Support by Jackie. Comments or questions? He's a master, right? Yeah.
My sister's trying to do all this paperwork, obviously, so everyone can be on here.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to business. Oh, excuse me, personnel. Personnel still, item B. A motion to approve the hiring of Caroline Podler to job number 213, temporary custodian in the high school afternoon shift effective January 19th, 2023 through June 1st, 2023 as needed. Do we have a motion?
Sorry?
Motion by Jackie, there's support. Support. Support by Mark. Comments or questions? Okay, I just have one. They're still going to do their pair of work. And then the new shift they're going to fill in. Okay?
And they're only going to fill in like to keep their hours on the table?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, hours.
Got it.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion on the second to approve the hiring of Carolyn Podler. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, a motion to approve the hiring of Jennifer Morris to job number 213, temporary custodian in high school afternoon shift effective January 19th, 2023 through June 1st, 2023. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Danielle?
Support.
Support by Jackie. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, a motion to approve the hiring of Darlene Hanson to job number 213, temporary custodian in the high school afternoon shift effective January 19th, 2023 through June 1st, 2023 as needed. Is there a motion?
So.
Motion by Mark?
Support.
Support by Jackie. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E is a motion to approve the hiring of Kimberly Wirt to job number 213, temporary custodian in the high school afternoon shift effective January 19th, 2023 through June 1st, 2023 as needed. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Cindy by Jackie. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, motion to approve the hiring of Samantha Barabee to job number 213, temporary custodian in the high school afternoon shift effective January 19th, 2023 through June 1st, 2023 as needed. Is there a motion? Motion by Shelley?
Support.
Support by Jackie. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G is a motion to approve the hiring of Teresa Augustin to job number 213, temporary custodian in the high school afternoon shift effective January 19th, 2023 through June 1st, 2023 as needed. Is there a motion?
I have a motion.
Support.
Motion by Danielle, support by Mark. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H is a motion to approve the hiring of Jennifer Morris to job number 214, after-school bus supervision paraprofessional. Item H is a motion to approve the hiring of Jennifer Morris to job number two fourteen, after-school bus supervision para-professional, effective January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three through June first, two thousand twenty-three as needed. Motion to, motion by Danielle?
Support.
And Jackie supports. Comments or questions? Would this bring that person over?
They'll have to trash a bit where they won't fill the call or that.
Ain't that there? Custodian work too. The answer is no.
The answer is no.
No.
I guess all I figured is to, is that if you're gonna do the, the bus, then you wouldn't do the custodian, you know, if you have to be hours late, you just.
Yeah.
She's just willing to be both positions.
Make sure that that's clear. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion in a second to approve the hiring of Jennifer Morris to after-school bus supervision para-professional. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item I is a motion to approve the hiring of Stephanie Bakethun to job number two fourteen, after-school bus supervision para-professional, effective January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three through June first, two thousand twenty-three as needed, do we have a motion? Motion by Cindy, support by Shelley. Any comments or questions?
Just one last question, yeah, sir. Do they work for any different trainings or, you know, the vice or anything like that?
No, they're all para-professionals, so, that I couldn't hire them at the trains.
We have a motion in a second then to approve the hiring of Stephanie Bakethun to the afternoon, after-school bus supervision para-professional. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, moving on to item B. Business section, item A is a motion to approve the increase in pay for the district teachers on call employees as follows. Substitute teacher increase of twenty dollars per day, retired Chisholm teacher substitute increase twenty-five dollars per day, and the para increases a dollar and fifty cents per hour, and the effective date will be February first, two thousand twenty-three. Do we have a motion to approve?
I have a motion.
Motion by Jackie, there's support.
Support.
Support by Cindy, comments or questions?
I'm assuming that we're trying to get our, our pay in line with other schools, that we don't, so we're attractive to people?
Yeah.
To take the position.
So we matched the local area a year ago, and they just raised it again, so we need to match it so that we can be competitive with our sub school and, um, we don't lose people that way because they'll go to our closest neighbor if they have an opportunity to make more money.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Mr. Casey abstains. Okay, thank you. All right, item B is a pro of the resolution of the School Board of Independent Schools, District Number Six Nine Five, City Public Schools, State of Minnesota. The district approved approving the sale of District's General Obligation School Building Bond, Series Two Zero Two Three A. Do we have a motion?
Aye.
Motion is by Shelley, there's support.
Support.
Support by Cindy. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We're you.
There's a motion. I know. Someday I'll get this done, anyway, here's the resolution of the School Board of Independent Schools, District Number Six Nine Five. Chisholm Public Schools, State of Minnesota, approving the sale of District's General Obligation School Building Bonds, Series Twenty Twenty Three Eight, to the purchaser thereof, determining the form and details of such bonds, authorizing the execution, delivery, and registration of such bonds, providing for the payment and the security for such bonds, and authorizing and ratifying certain other documents and actions in connection therewith. So we have a motion, was by Shelley, and the support was by Cindy. Roll call please, Lisa.
Director Sider?
Yes.
Director Rice?
Yes.
Director Cardy Simon?
Yes.
Director Lappi?
Yes.
Director Casey?
Yes.
Board chair Raha.
Yes, motion carries. Item C is a motion to approve the proposal for contracted services with Kristen Bohheisel as presented. Do we have a motion?
Sorry?
Motion is by Shelley, there's support.
Support.
Support by Jackie, comments or questions?
I love this, I do this again.
So, when she last worked here, there were some open hours that I could use, approved by the board, to help, like, in a transition, so, I've had her help me, uh, and Alex with a couple, uh, just figuring some things out that we couldn't unravel, that she had some historical perspective on. So, uh, she's helped us with a couple of things, and when we do our kickoff starting the twenty-seventh, we're gonna have her on board as part of helping with that process. So it's Friday.
Are we, are we expecting a lot of travel?
Uh, if she has it her way, it'd be zero, so.
Yeah, she'll come.
She won't.
Yeah, and I'm okay.
Yeah.
Cloud electronics, really.
Yep.
You don't really need to travel that too much.
Yeah, it's a physical impossibility, is what it is, so. Okay, any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Okay, item D is a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school calendar as presented. Is there a motion?
Sorry?
Aye.
Motion by Jackie and support by Shelley. Comments or questions? We made the change to, um, MLK.
I can answer.
So, I had this go up to around twenty different staff members, we've had multiple renditions of it. A request was made to align their PD day to either the end or first day of second semester, so that change was made. And then they had an extra day the first week of January, um, which paralleled previous calendars that they had, uh, had asked to get moved to reflect that. MLK Day, so, those were the, the two, um, significant changes, otherwise the rest stayed fairly the same as previous years.
I was happy to see that after that couple emails over the weekend, and it was nice to be able to report that on MLK Day, and they're gonna be in effect.
Yeah, and I, I responded the same way.
I personally think having school on MLK Day is a good thing because if a child is at home, chances are they're not getting the lesson and being taught about him. Whereas when they're in school, they're getting full lessons at the majority of their classes, so, I think it's a good thing, 'cause I know, I mean, I wouldn't have had the time to teach my kid about him.
There's actually statute behind, um, school district's obligation in doing so many hours worth of those lessons as well, so.
Cause they'll still get the lessons, they just won't get them on the day.
Yeah, they, most of the teachers are going, well, okay.
A week.
A week or a couple of weeks even, so. Okay, okay, so we have a motion in a second to approve the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D is a motion to approve the Minnesota State High School East Forty Big Grant to offset costs in two specific areas, including leadership initiatives, safety, and transportation as presented, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Jackie, or? Is there a support?
No.
By Mark. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay. Maybe a resolution. Is it a resolution? We didn't.
Yes, it's a resolution.
It doesn't fit out here, I just looked at it.
Okay.
Yes, it does.
That's okay, thanks Jackie, I lose track of it. Anyhow, Lisa, can we get a little?
Director Sider?
Yes.
Director Rice?
Yes.
Director Cardy Simon?
Yes.
Director Lappi?
Yes.
Director Casey?
Yes.
Board chair Raha.
Yes, thank you. Okay, all the next items are first readings and policies, I'm just gonna run them down, and, um, we'll take no action on them. Item X is the first reading of policy number four oh one, equal employment opportunity. Item G is first reading policy number four oh two, disability non-discrimination. Item E, first reading of policy number four oh three, discipline, suspension, and dismissal of school district employees. Item I, first reading of policy number four oh four, employment background checks. Item J is the first reading of policy number four oh five, evidence preference. Item K, first reading of policy number four oh six, public and private personnel data informed. Item L, first reading of policy number four oh seven, employee right to know exposure to hazardous substances. Item M, first reading of policy number four oh eight, subpoena of a school district employee. Item number N, first reading of policy number four oh nine, employee publications, instructional materials, inventions, and creations. Item O, first reading of policy number four twelve, expense reimbursement. And item P is the first reading of policy number eight oh seven, health and safety. Okay, so those are all the policies, they'll come up for another reading in the next year. So, moving on to discussion, this was post-file four fourteen, you have to use that, okay?
So that was just an update, so, uh, it's exactly the same bill that was in last year that made it to the finish line, but they never voted to cross the finish line, so this is the updated version, and I just wanted to make you aware that Representative Listergard authored the bill and has other signatures on it as well, uh, Olson, Swaba, and I guess, and so it reads the same as, as the previous one, um, it's just an updated one, and as you can see, there's a number of other entities that jumped on board, uh, this go around, so.
Hard to be believed, or isn't it?
We're trans-etter, that's all I can say.
Yeah.
Would the other jump on, near thoughts?
I personally think it makes it harder, but there is an unprecedented amount of money this year, so if it does have a chance, this would be a year possibly it could. But we'll see.
We'll ask you for more.
This is just the tax relief portion, um, we did not ask for a bonding bill when we started the project. Uh, some of these other entities that are on here do have, um, some bills that are presented right now.
Okay, well, anyhow.
It, it would be the equivalent of around eight hundred ninety thousand dollars, um, in savings for our district, so it'd be a good thing if it passed.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, Shelley and Cindy and I attended MSBA last week, and, and there's a multiple areas of roundtables that were just fabulous, on top of the open day speaker, who is even more fabulous, but, so, these next two items come out of that. We had discussed with, uh, a roundtable about having a student at the board table, and they had a student from Nevis High School and one from Oatana High School that presented and said what their role is and this and that. But, um, from what I'm gathering on this item is the students fill out a resume, and the school board interviews them to see if any of them are qualified, just wondering what the members think of that.
I think it's a great idea, so, I, it's always good to have students' input, I mean, if we can get them.
Is it one representative, and did they state whether that representative was a senior, a junior, sophomore?
Any ideas on that?
They, they've had, um, if I remember right, it was freshman, all the way to juniors, you know, seniors, you know, they're going out the door, so. Um, but it's a perspective from the students' area on how things that maybe we're doing affects them, or what we could do maybe to help them. They would, in my, and this is just my opinion, but, you know, maybe once, one meeting a month, like the principals do and things like that, they come and they report, this is what's going on, you know, um, things like that, I don't know how this involves the student council or anything like that, but, like Cindy said, I think it's a worthy idea, and I've been on after this for a long time, and it's just never taken place, but now there's a procedure in place, and we make the decision.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask you, Bob, was like, in your history, have you had this ever? Okay.
And I honestly think that in order to make it work well would be, like, almost going, not having a whole group here, but, you know, singling out a group that does a lot in the school, and having, you know, somebody from that group, because, I mean, you want somebody who's involved, but I suppose that would come on the application.
Yeah, I guess like the application is, okay, here's the activities I'm involved in, and here's what I.
Yeah.
What I do, you know, um, so, we could proceed with this, we're, you know, I don't know if it's for this year, I, I don't know, it's up to you guys, but, um, if we do do this, um, it's just, they'll come to the table, sit with us, stay at the meeting, they don't vote, they just make a report. And if anything we're do, it's affecting them, that's when they have a chance to talk to us and say, here's the deal. Superintendent Norman is also involved in the interview process, so.
Is there a way we could like, um, you know, kinda like, put it out there for the kids to see if there'd be any interest?
That's what I was gonna suggest, maybe should just see this rest of this year, like, if there's interest, and then maybe get applications and start next. So then next school year, just because we're kind of, you know, toward the end, and, you know, but you could see that, like you said, get, maybe get the word out, get some interest and see.
Like, have Mark, you know, Mark, even Travis, I mean, people who know kids are involved and stop them, it's interesting.
Yeah.
Kids that are involved to see if they. People in student government might be interested if there's, you know, already.
That's true, yeah, I think that's a great idea, if, we go through this, you know. Present it to their student council first, and, yeah, so that generates some type of interest, I don't know.
And roll buzzers and everything, yeah.
You know.
One way to get it out to all the students is pick one of their required classes and see if the teacher would present it to them.
Take civics or something, or something that I'll take.
Yeah. Like English, they have, you know.
Yeah.
Something like that, and have the teacher present it and do kind of a survey that way too. There are not many kids signing their emails, generalized emails and do surveys, but.
And then if you get the, kind of the information out this spring, then they could say, you know, say that, you know, two weeks after school starts, well, you know, as soon as we do, and then, kind of get them involved during the beginning.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great idea, so maybe we could, uh, work that through market, and.
They should also think of a way to get, if whoever's gonna be the representative, how are they gonna take, like, information, are they gonna do it, like, a set of email, or are they gonna have, like, you know, a box, like, I can drop off, like, you know, I, you know, whatever, just something so that they have a, they don't have to reinvent the wheel, like, how the best way, like.
For people, for kids to go to that.
Yeah, go to them and get, and get ideas and stuff that they wanna, they bring up or whatever, or maybe they have, maybe they have some ideas about that, which is, uh.
Yeah.
Um, Bob, did you say, at that roundtable, did they say they were coming for the policy, MSBA, for this position? Or, I mean, the guidelines or anything like that?
There's no real guidelines, it's, you know, like I said, they had somebody from Nevis, which is a small school, and then Oatana, which is a big school. Person from Oatana, there was actually two students, it was this young lady and another guy that, uh, do this, and they alternated back and forth. But I think, you know, um, when we start, if we start discussing personnel issues and things like that, then that's when they step out. But this is just for, so we can get a perspective on what they're thinking, and what, what, if there's something we could do to help, you know, with this stuff, so. I think, you know, I, um, I will go and talk to Mark, and then we can get that set up, okay?
Sounds good.
Yeah, now the next.
Yeah, now the next thing, the exciting part, that in twenty-two years on this school board, we have never done. And needs to be done, it's a board self-evaluation. And at the round table, the chairs were four deep. People wanted to know about this, cuz there's a lot of new board members down there that um are curious about things like this. So what I gather is that it's like a seventy-one or seventy-two question questionnaire. We each fill it out individually. And then if we want, we can call M S B A up and they will come up here and review it and recommend changes maybe or things like that. It's about a thousand dollars, a little over a thousand dollars to have M S B A come up and review this thing, and I I would uh, I think this is a good thing, um and we need to evaluate ourselves on an individual basis. And then we come together as a board and work with this, you know. So I would really like a volunteer to take this. Not me. And if there's two people that wanna do it, that's great, um I don't care, but I don't have time at this point.
Something that'll do it.
I'm so happy.
Since we were there at the C A round, do you have?
So so I guess the thing is, is to get tests, um yeah, what's her name again, I can't remember.
I haven't, I have the paper.
We have it, yeah.
Okay, I got it.
And then maybe after we do the, like, the quiz or survey or whatever, and we can do like, edit it, maybe we can come up with a plan and not have to pay M S B A to come up here and tell us what to do.
Well.
I I think we could probably think of like
They offer, you know, and and.
But we can take that stuff, I'm just wondering if like
Yeah.
from all that, from the feedback we have, maybe we can come up with a plan of here's like four things that we want to make changes or work on or something like that.
And make goals for ourselves.
Make goals for ourselves as opposed to someone else make your goals, because somebody else makes your goals, yeah. Just tell me that.
So.
It's much better if you made, you made your own goals, yeah.
So anyhow, if if you guys wanna get in touch with M S B A and get all rolling on that, and then let us know the progress and we'll do the evaluation in a minute.
But that's okay, let's get the information out. Oh yeah, we said there's very different ways to go along.
And it does include you.
Yeah.
So.
Just so you know. Well, you have to take a seventy-one question.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
I take lots of surveys all the time.
Oh yeah, oh yeah.
I do know that, I think.
Okay, so information is being rolled in numbers, and as you see, we've been hanging in there. Here we go, and uh so any other information from members? I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion, thank you.
Motion by Danielle, support by Shelley. Adjourned, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries is five fifty-five.
If anybody else wanted to see the teacher service.